So we're open.
Open for business.
Got two decisions. The first one is on case number 2769, Southampton Hospital, 240 Meeting House Lane.
I move we accept this decision as proposed.
I'll second it.
All in favor? And then we have a decision, 2778, Killian Ob-- I'm gonna mispronounce this, I know it.
Hey, it's Brady.
Oh, Brady.
Maybe.
Seventy-five South Main Street.
He was Brady in Gallica.
Thank you.
We can do a motion?
Oh, okay. I move we accept this decision as proposed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us down to the pending cases, 2746, 515 and 554 Hill Street, LLP, 550 and 554 Hill Street.
Kevin, I'm gonna wait on them all, okay?
Okay.
Kevin, on this one, we can just simply announce for the record that we discussed the SECRE procedure at our work session last week, and we determined that we should do it, that this should follow the coordinated review procedure, and therefore, we're directing our environmental consultant to initiate the coordinated review procedure, and to request that the planning board be the lead agency.
Does that require a-- do we have a motion?
No, that doesn't require a vote. So Chick Voorhees will follow up on that, and we adjourn the matter for all purposes, but there's nothing further for us to do until, presumably, the planning board will accept lead agency and take that over, and then they'll have to do the SECRE review, and there's no point in our doing any further hearing on the variance application until the planning board has rendered its SECRE determination. We can carry it on our agenda, but, because we don't know how long that will take, but, you know, I think each month, we would just adjourn it until we've heard from the planning board. So for now, you can adjourn for all purposes.
I move we adjourn 2746 for all purposes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On case 2766.
There's-- I represent one of the neighbors regarding this matter. I was hoping to say something regarding 550 and 554 Hill Street.
Well, we had closed this for decision.
No, that's not the one.
No, the one that you just adjourned.
Oh, you're talking--
I'd like to submit something for the record and make some comments if that would be permitted.
All right. Well, you can, but what is the purpose until we've-- there's been a SECRE determination?
Okay.
We gotta open the meeting.
Can we reopen it?
Did we adjourn it for all purposes?
I move we reopen 2746.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Thank you. David Kirsch from McLaughlin Negan, FPHB Realty. So one of the neighboring properties. Got a letter here for the board in response to the latest submission by the I'll start off--
Are you gonna be addressing the merits of the variance application?
No, I won't. I'm really just gonna address the SECRE issue, if that's allowed.
Okay. You, I think you took the position that we needed to do a coordinated--
Exactly.
So that's what we're doing.
Well, I also take the position that the zoning board should be the lead agency on that, in this matter. That's my primary concern, hearing that the decision's been made that the planning board should be lead agency. So--
If you want to address it, go ahead.
I'd like to address that. The planning board doesn't have the ability to grant a subdivision for lots that aren't compliant with village code. So in order for them to even grant a subdivision, these significant variances would have to be addressed, and if granted by the zoning board, before they could make their determination. And the significance of these variances is, I think, enough that this board should be the lead agency. The determination of the planning board essentially will be compliance with the standards in the code for the planning, which isn't addressing the significant zoning variances that are being asked for in this application.
Okay. I think you're mixing up the variance standards that will be applicable when this eventually comes back to the zoning board with SECRE. Whoever is the lead agency will have to address all potential impacts from this project.
Right, and I agree, and I understand--
The planning board typically handles SECRE, well, the planning board always handles SECRE in connection with subdivisions, and they typically, this is something that they typically do, and they will have to address in the SECRE process the significance of the potential impacts from the variance requests.
Okay, it's just, my feeling is, as the zoning board is typically, is the board that grants the variances, that to have the planning board act on, as lead agency, on a matter where the first necessary step even to get to planning is the granting of these variances, I just feel as that first necessary step, that the zoning board--
Planning board won't be acting on the subdivision application. They'll be doing the SECRE review.
Right, and their background is in--
And once the SECRE review is done, then the zoning board will address the variance requests, and the planning board would address the subdivision if the variances are granted.
Okay. I think I've made my point clear. I feel that the variances are the ultimate issue, and as this board has the expertise and the background in the variances, that they should be the lead agency on this issue. And thank you. And just like to, if you could just, there are other points raised in my submission that I guess will be addressed at a later time, once SECRE has been completed. Thank you very much.
I move we adjourn for all purposes.
I'll second.
All in favor? That brings us down to 2766, Phillip and Nina Edwards, 395 First Neck Lane.
This one, we're just holding over for a decision. You know, at the work session, we agreed to give Michael Walsh until tonight to make any further written submission he wanted to do, and I think, I copied you on the emails.
He has done that.
And he has done that, so now it's, we're just holding over for a decision.
I move we close the decision.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we should have a decision for that at the July meeting then? Next case is 2777, 45 Moses Lane, LLC.
For the applicant, Giller G. Planning in 21 South Main Street, Southampton. Now, this is a continuing application. It was heard in the first instance at your meeting in May, and was adjourned for all purposes because you had requested some additional information, some of which I supplied to you before the work session, other of which I'll supply to you this evening. I believe that one of the board members at least had asked us to justify or substantiate the fact that this warehouse use, the bottling, has not been abandoned, and there were some comments made by a couple of the neighbors. And what I have since that meeting obtained is an affidavit from Edmund Lowe, who was one of the, who's currently the sole owner of the property, but who acquired the property with Roy Wines IV in March of 1997, and therefore, since 97 up to the present, is fully familiar with the use of the property. And the relevance of that is, in 1997, is that is a date, a certificate of occupancy for the property, which includes, among other things, a valid, pre-existing, non-conforming office and warehouse for non-alcoholic beverage distribution. And as you'll see from this affidavit, which I'm handing up, he has attested that from that time until April of 2012, he and his company did in fact conduct a bottled water, bottling and distribution business from the warehouse on that property. And I know that for a fact, because the bottled water from our office has been supplied by that company. So I'll give you an original and several copies of that affidavit. The affidavit also indicates that since April of 2012, which is only slightly more than a year ago, the owners have made no voluntary abandonment of that particular use. So I think it's fair to say that that use is still a valid use. It could be started up tomorrow with Canada Dry, Coca-Cola, Pepsi Cola, any similar bottling company, or bottled water, or some of those things. So the use is very much alive. The use could, even though it may not have been tremendously intensive, that's not to say that the next guy that comes in there in two weeks couldn't make a full-blown operation out of it and have every legal right to do so. So I think when you're considering this application, it's important to take that into account, that if this application is granted and that use is extinguished, that possibility of an intensive use could not then be reinstated. So that was one of the things you'd asked. The other thing that you would ask us to provide, and some of which I provided for the work session, is floor plans and elevations of the proposed guesthouse building. And I believe I submitted some. I'll submit additional copies, which perhaps are more legible. It's a plan consisting of, I believe, five sheets. The first sheet, I'll hand this up so you have it when I'm talking. The first sheet is a floor plan, and it's important to take a look at that, because as I represented at the initial hearing, this is a one-bedroom guesthouse. It also serves a dual purpose. If you look at the bottom part of it, the bottom part of it, which has a separate bathroom and lounge, serves as a pool house, so that it has two separate and distinct aspects to it. So we've basically combined a pool house and a small guesthouse into one building. Other pages show the elevations, the four elevations, and as you can see from the drawings, the height of the building from grade to the top of the ridge is 15 feet 11 inches, which is under the 16-foot maximum stipulated in the code. So these are the drawings you should be working with. I believe an earlier drawing may have had an incorrect height measurement on it, but these are the drawings that you should be working with. As you can see, there are all four, all four elevations. As you note from drawing A2, I believe that is the east elevation. As you can see, that has some, looks like French doors that would open up. As you know, from the site plan, the pool is proposed to be opposite that, so that this does also function as a pool house. I think that was the only other thing of any real substance that you asked us to submit. And so unless you have any questions, I think that's it.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Because a lot of the neighbors were here, and were concerned with the size of the building, amount of activity that is generated by a building that's not only just a pool house, it's got bedroom and cooking, and, you know, all the facilities, like someone can live in, it's like a family. And then the pool, that it is sort of jammed back into the back corner, which is very advantageous to this owner, but not to the neighbors. And I noticed, like, the new house is like 100 feet back from the street, which then pushes the pool back, pushes, you know, they've got 15 feet from the back of the pool house to the property line, but he's got 100 feet from the front of his house to the road, you know. It appears to me that the pool and the house were all pulled forward, and the pool house pulled forward, it'd have less impact upon the neighbors.
So as you're saying, is take the whole thing and shift it closer to the street?
Yeah. I mean, if you looked at the original house, the new house is actually in the backyard of the existing house that's there.
I could certainly discuss that with them. And they haven't, you know, obviously finalized these plans, so I could see if they'd be willing to shift the whole thing further to the east.
And I'm not even sure, I didn't even go down and relook at the streetscape, where, like, all the other houses on the street might be set back at 40 feet, and all of a sudden, this one is set back at 100 feet. It sort of throws the, it's a little bit out of balance that way, too.
That's a legitimate point. I'll look into that, and if we can substantially increase that setback, I would assume that you might have a slightly different view of it. Okay, I'll certainly take a look at that and report back to you next month.
This is the original house. 100 feet and 2 inches from the, I mean, the whole original house. It's actually-- It's got a huge front yard.
You're right, the existing house is about 40 feet from Moses Lane. I'm looking for this. So I'll certainly explore that with them and see if that--
Now, I think you would find that the majority of those houses on this street are about that distance, 40. No, many of them are 100 feet back.
Well, so I'll be more than happy to explore that with them and see if that, that they can shift the whole thing further to the east. And if that is achievable, and I come back, is that something you'd be a little bit more likely to consider then?
Well, we would consider it, yeah.
Right, okay. I'll certainly make that suggestion.
All right. Do you have any questions?
No.
Terry?
No.
Rick?
Yeah.
Do you have anyone out in the audience who likes to read this application? Well, therefore, what we're gonna do is hold this open for all purposes.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brings us down to the one new case we have, which is 2779 Coles Associates LLC, 477 Little Plains Road.
Bennett and Reed, 212 Windmill Lane, Southampton, New York, by Kimberly Judd of Council. I'm pinching for John Bennett tonight, who's on vacation. Do you mind if I just spread out on the table?
Sure.
This is a corner piece on--
You need to speak up so that--
Sure.
You wanna point the microphone?
It's picked up by Channel 22.
Just pick up, there's a microphone on the table.
There is?
Oh, okay, right there.
Just talk a little louder.
Okay. This is a corner parcel on 477 Little Plains Road, on the corner of Little Plains and Gin Lane. And there are a couple maps, I think, are pretty relevant, and that's why I'm kind of just gonna spread them out here on the table. In your package, you'll see here that one of them is a Suffolk County tax map, which is the current tax map, and right behind it is a 1981 Suffolk County tax map. So I just kind of line these up side by side, just because I can see the differences in the area over the years. The survey shows that, and these actually are two parcels that are separately identified on the Suffolk County tax map, and they're actually separately assessed by the village of Southampton as well. And as the survey shows, the one parcel on the corner contains the dwelling and the, and part of a pool, and the other lot contains most of the pool, the swimming pool. So we have two parcels, two tax lot parcels. Each one is over two acres. The one parcel contains over 87,000 square feet, and the other one contains a little over 91,000 square feet, and both of these lots are located in the R-120 zoning district. As I said before, both of these lots are currently separately identified on the Suffolk County tax map, and also were separately identified on the 1981 tax map. And in your package, you'll see that there's also copies of tax bills throughout the years from the county of Suffolk and from the village separately assessing each one of these parcels. The applicant is seeking to, seeking variances for lot area for each of these parcels, since they are in R-120 zoning district, and they contain 87,000 square feet, and the other parcels 91,000 square feet. If the board is inclined to grant those lot area variances, lot area, area variances will also be needed for setbacks for the existing house, one being the side yard of the house to 27.4 feet instead of the required 30, and the other for a rear yard, to allow a rear yard of 75.3 feet instead of the required 100. The, this map here is a character, I guess you'd call it a character, the neighborhood analysis. The subject lots are in pink, highlighted in pink. And what's interesting about this is, if you take a look at the square block right here, and by square block, I mean within the square of Gin Lane and Little Plains Road, Foster Crossing and South Main Street, there are 26 lots in that square block. None of them conform to the R-120 zoning requirements. I believe that the, there were several upzones. The area was zoned R-40 from 1930 to 1968. Then there was an upzone in 1968 from R-40 to R-80. And then the last upzone was in 1983, from R-80 to the current R-120. So you can see here, there's a little detail on the bottom that shows that added to the 26 lots in this square block, none of them conform to the R-120 lot area standard. There are 16 lots in this square area that are under two acres, so that's a majority of the lots. And then there are 10 lots that are two acres and above, and those, one of those, those two parcels, of course, are the Cowls, part of the 10 lots that are two acres and above. And if you take this whole section here, on, on section 17 of the tax map, this whole area actually is zoned R-120. And there are only a handful of lots in that area that conform to the R-120 standard. And you have several variances that I included in your package that were granted over the years. And I, forgive me, I can't pronounce one of them. I wouldn't even try to say her name. Eleanor, you can see on the top left-hand corner, she's on the corner of South Main and Foster. And you can see that she was granted lot area variances in 1981, and at the time that she got her variances, the area was zoned R-80. There's also a variance to the right of that, which is Dorothy Price, and that variance was granted in 1988, and at that time, the property was zoned R-120. And further on down, you'll see, highlighted in yellow, a property by Angier Biddle Duke, who was also granted lot area relief in 1989, and her property was also in R-120 at that time. As far as the five-part test, this change in the character of the neighborhood, I know one of the big concerns that many boards have when you come before them for lot area variances, well, if we give the, and there's several have already been granted over the years, but if we give this to you, then some of the lots are gonna come in, and they're gonna want to do the same thing. But I would submit to the board that this application is special and it's unique, because if you compare the 81 tax map to the present tax map, our client's lots are still shown as two separate tax lots. If you have another lot, let's say, the one over here, which is tax lot 32, which is large enough to subdivide, you can see that it's shown as one lot on the tax map, and whereas, on the present tax map, and the 81 tax map, my client's two lots are still shown as two separate lots. And we still have tax bills that we can show that we've been taxed separately over the years, both from the county and the village. And I think that's what makes this application unique, is that any other property that's big enough and capable of subdividing, they can't come into you and say, "We were always two separate tax lots from 1981 forward." My client bought her property in 1978, and when we're talking about self-created hardship is one of the factors for granting a lot area variance. She bought in 1978, when zoning was R-80. So when she purchased the property back in 1978, she had two conforming lots. And what causes the merger is the fact that the both properties were on the same deed. But if you have conforming lots, that doesn't matter. It's when the lots become non-conforming, which was in 1983, that happened, and she's been owning this property since 1978, when she purchased it. So as far as self-created hardship, I believe that she, when she bought these properties, they were conforming lots in the R-80 zone. It was a subsequent upzoning. She never placed the two lots on separate deeds, or a check aborted them, if you will. But the village and the county always had them shown as two separate lots, and they were always assessed as two separate lots. And I think when you're talking about whether or not it's a substantial variance, again, another factor in your weighing test that the board considers. As far as, if you look at the number, you can, you can make an argument that it's substantial, but if you look at what is in the rest of the neighborhood, 16 of the lots in this area are under two acres. My client's lots are two acres and above, and 10 lots are two acres and above. I think our client is one of the few ones in this neighborhood who have one of the bigger lots, and if the board finds that they are merged and should be merged as one lot, it'll go from being two acres to one four-acre parcel, the biggest lot in the neighborhood. So I think those are a couple factors to consider. There's several variances that I just went over with the board that were granted over the years. Some of them have a little bit of different fact pattern, but I think the one that was Dorothy Price, that was granted in 1988, made specific character of the neighborhood findings, that the lots were in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and that the character of the neighborhood was 88,000 square foot lots in the neighborhood, which is one of the bases that this board, or your predecessors, granted the variance back in 1980, 1988. I know that there's, Linda Riley's here representing one of the neighbors, so I didn't know if she wanted to speak tonight, or, but definitely, we were going to ask if you have any questions, and we can adjourn it if Linda would like to speak at the next meeting, or if you have any questions.
What was the zoning when your client sold the property?
She's still--
She purchased the property, didn't she?
Yes, she purchased in 78. It's in the name of an LLC now, but she's the managing member of the LLC.
So it was just transferred into the LLC?
Well, it's transferred to Jan Cole in 82, it says here.
That's my, that's the client. She's the one, she's, the Cowls family has always owned the property since--
Yes, but it was transferred in 82, I gather. Is Virginia Cole still around?
Yes.
Is that your client?
Yes, they're all in the same family.
Yes, but it was transferred legally, right?
Yes, and it was transferred a few years ago into an LLC entity, but the Coles family is still the managing member.
Well, does it matter if it was transferred? In 82, was the zoning law changed?
The upzones, I believe it was 83, was the last upzone, from R-80 to R-120.
Okay, thank you.
So at the time of transfer, it was R-80?
R-80, well--
1982, it was still R-80.
1982, it was--
That's what she said.
Yes, yes. And it was 83 is when it was upzoned from R-80 to R-120.
I'm a little confused. It was, she bought it, it was two pieces of land, correct?
Well, no--
Originally?
When she bought it, it was on one deed.
Okay, then it became separated, because you said there's two tax bills.
I think you should give us copies of the 1978 deed. I mean, I'm just looking at this chain of title that you gave us.
Okay.
I think you should give us copies of the 1978 deed to Virginia Cows, the 1982 deed to Jan Cows, and the 19, I'm sorry, the 2010 deed to Cows Associates LLC.
Sure.
And some of these things, it says in perenn, conveys tax lots 30 and 31, but I don't know if that means, it describes them as two parcels, or describes them as one parcel. That's why I'm asking for the deeds.
Okay. Let me get you that.
So that we can see those. Unless, I mean, if you have any further questions. For the moment, I have one other question.
Yeah, no, it's just mostly, it's, I think it's more in your expertise, anyway.
Okay. In the application rider, before you request the variances, you're requesting an interpretation that the parcels have not merged.
Our client's withdrawing that, that interpretation.
Because I could not comprehend-- Because I could not comprehend from any information that's with the application, any even wild argument that they have not merged.
Right now, I'm not making any argument as to that effect. We're just, it's just that we're asking for the lot area variances to unmerge the two lots and for the setback variances for the existing house, if the board is inclined to grant them.
I might have more questions after I see the deeds. And now that I know that they're not making an interpretation argument, I can forget that, and I can spend more time looking at the tax map and other information that they've given us.
Okay.
So I don't know if I'll have any more questions. I was spending some time trying to figure out what kind of interpretation argument you were talking, or the application was talking about, and I couldn't think of any. And by the time I stopped thinking about that, I ran out of time to look at all the other stuff, so.
Okay. So no, definitely, we'll get you copies of the deeds, and then we can discuss them if we...
Okay.
Do you have anyone out in the audience who'd like to be heard of this application?
I'm Linda Riley, 235 Hampton Road, Southampton. And I'm here on behalf of a neighbor who lives directly across the street. I was only just retained today, so I didn't have much time to review all of this. I, too, spent a fair amount of time trying to figure out what the argument was for an interpretation. But I'll put that one aside, because clearly they have merged. I also want to point out that that chain of titles shows that it was in common ownership even before it was transferred into the, into the Coles family. If you go back to when the Bancrofts owned it, the Bancrofts, two of them, acquired each lot separately and then merged them together and conveyed them together way back in 1978, I'm sorry, 1966, excuse me. In 76, they conveyed then both tax lots in one deed to Thomas Bancroft. I also want to point out that there were lots of opportunities, which I think someone here was picking up on, to put these in single and separate ownership, if that was ever a thought. Certainly, when she was considering restructuring her holdings when she conveyed it to an LLC, there was possibly an opportunity there. But the fact is that this property has been used as one integrated lot for decades. That pool has been there for decades. This is not a situation where you have two side-by-side lots with, often, as is the case in two of these variances she cited, with two separate residences on them. Rather, it's one house that has one pool and backyard and some beautiful gardens, and they're all completely integrated into what looks like one estate lot. The other point I want to make is that I found that portrayal of just Section 17 of the tax map a little bit misleading. Because if you stand on the corner of that property, on the corner of Gin Lane and Little Plains, and look across the street on Little Plains, and across the street on Gin Lane, and across the street, Catty Corner, the other way, each one of those lots is five lot, five acres or so. The lot directly across the street at 466 is 4.6 acres. The property diagonally across the street at 180 Gin Lane is 5.4 acres. The property directly across the street on Gin Lane has evolved from what used to be four separate tax maps with, you know, four different properties. It's gone down over the years to three and is now two. And that's really more the direction that this community is Gin Lane. It's not Foster Crossing, it's Gin Lane. And there is a market now for, and there is a sort of trend toward taking smaller properties and assembling them into larger estate-sized properties. And the one just on the other side of that, which is, on the other side of the one I was just talking about, is 5.9 acres. So right around this property, really, in every direction, if you stand on the corner, are much larger properties, and all meeting the zoning regulations. I also want to point out to you again that these examples that she's given of prior variance relief are from the 1980s. They date back to shortly after the upzoning occurred. And two of them, and one of them involves a lot that had one, one family house here, that had a two-family house next to it, and a hedge in between. And that's what you granted the variance for. And it was already being used as two residences. That's not the case here. Here, you're talking about ripping out a swimming pool, jamming it onto a lot that's half the size, and increasing the density by adding an entirely new residential compound, the house and the pool and everything else. My client feels that that's not the way this neighborhood is trending, that the increase in density and traffic and everything will be detrimental. And I'd like to have some more time to address this more fully. I'm just sort of pulling out a few of the things that I had a chance to look at today. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to be heard?
Well, we need to adjourn it for all purposes.
Adjourn for all purposes.
Lydger raised a point about the swimming pool. I think it would be helpful if we, if one of you looked at the, or both of you looked at the Village Building Department records and could tell us when that swimming pool was constructed.
Tried to do that today.
Obviously, it would have had to have been constructed at a time when the map showed one overall parcel. Because it does extend across the property.
No, no, excuse me. What, I did, I did go to the building department today and got copies of quite a bit of stuff. But that tax map division, that tax map division goes way back, as far as I can tell. And you can tell that from the single and separate search.
I know, but what I'm talking about is, you wouldn't have, they wouldn't have been able to get a building permit for a swimming pool...
Except the Coles...
Unless, unless the map that they used to get the building permit showed one overall parcel.
Showed it as one lot, which in fact, for zoning purposes, it was, because it had been merged.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Right, yeah. I wasn't able to pull that file today.
Yeah, okay.
There are, there are a lot of files that relate to this property, yeah.
Okay, well, adjourn for all purposes.
For all purposes. One favor?
You can't make conclusions.
That closes this meeting of the zoning board of Pils, Southampton.